Good evening and welcome to the December 15th meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with a pleasurable evening, some invitational questions by Mr. Tom Swizer. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is less more of a story than it is a prayer tonight. I don't know if anybody knows the story of Lauren Hill. Lauren is a freshman at the University of Mount St. Joe's in Cincinnati. Less than two months after her 18th birthday in 2013, Lauren was diagnosed with DIPG. It's an inoperable form of cancer that forms at the back of the stem where the spine meets the brain. Lauren's first question after her diagnosis was, can I still play basketball? She contacted the coach for St. Joe's and agreed, he agreed to allow her to play. Last night, St. Joe's played Hiram University, and even though St. Joe's was not victorious, Lauren realized her dream and scored two points. Lauren was ecstatic. Lauren's message is that each of us should live every moment as best we can. So with that in mind, my wish is this. As we enter the holiday season, and we may not get the parking spot that we want or angle for, or we didn't find that perfect gift, or we didn't get the gift we wanted, or traffic is backed up, or whatever frustration we encounter, remember Lauren, and just be thankful for God's gifts of life and of love. Amen.
Mrs. Knight has called the roll. Mr. Swizer. Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mrs. Snead.
Here.
Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mrs. Oda. Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Tremblay.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
All members are present. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the December 1st meeting of Troy City Council. Minutes of Council, December 1, 2014. Committee reports. Finance Committee recommended that the 2015 appropriation be approved and the funding be approved for the Troy Development Council, amount of $125,000 for Troy Main Street, and the amount of $55,000 to Troy Recreation Association, amount of $29,000, and PTCC in amount of $12,500. Resolution number R-55, 2014. A contract for the construction of Treasure Island Park portion of Riverfront Development, second reading. Resolution number R-56, 2014. Troy Recreation Association funding for the REC was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R-57, 2014. Approved funding to Troy Main Street, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-58, 2014. Funding for Troy Development Council, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-59, 2014. Allocating funds for public access was given, first title reading. Ordinance number O-35, 2014. The reappropriation was given, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-36, 2014. Appropriating funds for 2015 was given, first reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:40 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as read.
Accepted.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and settled by Mr. Kendall to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Swizer.
Yes.
The minutes of December 1 are approved. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the December 8th special meeting of Troy City Council. Minutes of Council, Special Meeting, December 8, 2014. The reading and signing of the notice of special meeting was the first item. Committee reports. Finance Committee gave an oral report that committee had again met regarding the public access funding PTCC and recommended that the Finance Committee recommendation of the $12,500 funding be approved. Resolution number R-59, 2014. Funding for public access was given, second reading. Ordinance number O-36, 2014. Appropriations for 2015 was given, second title reading. Leading adjourned at 6:27 PM. Are there any additions or questions to the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as read. Thank you.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and settled by Mr. Tremblay to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Swizer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
The minutes are approved. We have no committee reports tonight, so we will move on to the citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council.
Good evening. My name is Brad Stapleton, and I live at 411 Virginia Avenue here in Troy. I stand this evening to speak on agenda item labeled R-59-2014, funding for PTCC, or as the community knows it as Troy Public Broadcasting TV5. I'd like to read a statement I posted on Ms. Oda's Facebook page for the December 1st meeting of Troy City Council that I was unable to attend due to my college commitments. The following is that statement. "I urge the city of Troy to reconsider budget cuts to TV5 because of the positive impact the station has on the community. As a TV5 volunteer for the past several years, I have seen the station serve the community with not just programming, but a learning opportunity unlike no other. With the great leaps the station has made the past several months in conjunction with their plans for the future, TV5 is doing what it can to keep up with the viewing habits and technology of the modern-day viewer. Without funding for TV5, the citizens of Troy and Miami County will no longer be informed and entertained with programming such as live coverage of the Troy Strawberry Festival, Miami County Fair, Troy High School Athletic Events, Meet the Candidates Night, Troy Main Street Events, and many more. In closing, I urge City Council to reconsider budget cuts to TV5 and take a critical look at what the station does for the community as a whole. With a budget, Troy Public Broadcasting TV5 can continue to provide the citizens of Troy and Miami County quality programming to keep them informed and entertained." I thank you for your time, council.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments at this time?
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. I'm still alive. I haven't been here for the last couple, but I'm still alive. My views is on the Treasure Island. It hasn't changed a bit. I think that it's too much for Troy. Along with that, with all the rest of it, for $640,000 a year for 25 years, we're really stretching out into the future, and that, I don't think anybody here has a crystal ball to know what the future holds. We could fall back into another economic slump, and if so, we know where it's going to happen, where the citizens are going to have to dig deeper in their pockets to pull this Troy out on this Treasure Island and some of the other stuff. So, and I am glad to see that some of the people up here on the committee is finally getting to be good stewards of our money, and thinking of the citizens and not just the city of Troy, because this is what you're supposed to do, is think of the citizens and Troy, not just Troy. So, I, I know the last time I was here, which was three meetings ago, I asked for a breakdown of the cost of the $100 for the memorial graph, and I've yet to hear anything or see anything or get anything from Mr. Titherton or anybody else for that breakdown. And I just want you to know, I haven't forgotten it. You might have hoped I did, but I didn't. So, thank you much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments at this time?
Sean Denoyer, 2705 Vista Ridge Drive. I want to address some of the issues that were discussed last week. First, as a subscriber, knowing that the city has received up to $280,000 in franchise fees was shocking, and to know that a small amount is giving to the public TV station. Then we were told that the money is put into a city tech fund, and now $25,000 for cameras in this room. But yet, the station continues to have their budgets cut. Why? Throughout 2014, the station has had many challenges. Our little station has become just like the Little Engine That Could, but we could make positive efforts, new relationships have been formed, and doors were beginning to open again. We were prepared to give the council a presentation last week, but was told the day of the meeting that we were not allowed. Why? Well, as I said here last week, we did get a presentation from Mr. Titterington about the cameras in this room, and also he brought up the fact that he watched the TV station on a Wednesday at 6:15, at the time the station had advertising boards running at the time. They do run at times from one minute to 30 minutes throughout the day. That is some of our sponsorship. We have a promo of TV5 and was sent to the council members. This promo can also be watched on YouTube, Facebook, and of course, TV5. Those council members who took time to ask questions and support us, we thank you. I've done some investigation on my own on YouTube, and there are some numbers of views that I want to share with you. The TV5 promo had 65 views, the Troy Flood had 4,430 views, the Bicentennial Parade had 84 views, the Holiday Merchant Open House, 143 views, Streets Alive, 96 views, the Spelling Bee, 1,463 views, Troy Council Meetings, December 1, 28 views, December 8, 16 views, November 3, four views, October 20, 10 views. Now keep these numbers, we're from YouTube only, but with the live streaming and the access of social media sites. That's it? All right. Thank you, council.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments at this time?
My name is Rosaleen Raymond. I live at 31 North Walnut Street in Troy. I have done my best to get in touch with everyone at council, either left a message or some people, their telephones were not answered. I've written letters to the editor. Tonight, I pray that someone will change their vote. The citizens of Troy, I can't speak for all of them, but a lot of us do not wish for this money to be spent in this way. This is someone's legacy, and I'm afraid I'm not willing to pay for it. I've come to find out that the budget is, we have a deficit, maybe four out the last six years, don't quote me on the exact number. We've had a deficit. We have a banker that sits on council. If I had a business and my business ran a deficit four out of six years, and I wanted a large loan, would I get it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Jim Thompson, 209 Notting Hill Lane. I want to get on the comments about the Treasure Island projects they have lined up at the time. I think most people I've talked to in the city of Troy, they find it kind of rewarding to spend that kind of money in a floodplain. And then you're talking about having a deficit on our budget for next year. The two don't work, and I'm behind the council, on the four members of council that seem to be opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read resolution R-55, 2014. Resolution number R-55, 2014. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety, the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter a contract for the construction of the Treasure Island Park portion of the Riverfront Development Project. Cost not exceed $18,873,000. This is the third reading. Are there any questions or comments from council on the resolution? It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and settled by Mr. Swizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
No.
Mr. Twist.
No.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
No.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Swizer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
No.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read resolution R-59, 2014. Resolution number R-59, 2014. Resolution allocating funds to Public Television Communications Center for the year 2015. Provides the funding of $12,500. This is the third reading. Are there any comments or questions from council on this resolution?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark.
Just to clarify, if we vote no on this, they do not get $12,500. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that leaves their funding at zero.
That would.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Move for adoption. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just another clarification. If we vote yes on it, it gives them $12,500 for the first quarter, and then we stop funding.
Unless council were to pass some future resolution, that's true.
But if we vote no, it's just done.
Correct.
Anyone else?
Move for adoption.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and settled by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Swizer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-36, 2014. Ordinance number O-36, 2014. Ordinance appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio, for the year 2015. This is the approval of the budget, and the appropriation needs to be in place prior to January 1. This is the first reading. Are there any comments or questions from council? Yes. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and settled by Mr. Swizer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
No.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Swizer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
No.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
No.
Ordinance is adopted. That concludes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements? No, there are not. Mayor Vienning, do you have any comments this evening?
Certainly, to wish everybody, everybody in our community a very Merry Christmas, and hope that everyone becomes safe and joyous. I appreciated Mr. Swizer's message he shared with us today. It was very powerful. I would just make a couple of quick comments. I know we hear a lot about the Riverfront Initiative. I would just remind everybody that there were a lot of local and regional leaders that came early on and shared their expertise in a variety of areas, including education, parks, recreation areas, and transportation, and one of the things we all admire, economic development. And it wasn't just, it was leaders who are doers, both local and regional, and that included Troy Foundation, Troy Main Street, you might remember that. Just, you might also remember the Park Board, the REC Board, who are citizens, made up of Troy citizens, also unanimously supported that initiative. I will just say this, I believe strongly that the Army Corps of Engineers, which is a federal study, will come back in its form, and they will support and endorse not only development of the regional initiative, but certainly include Troy in the Riverfront Initiative. And so, I think it's a move forward. I hear and I respect people's opinion, but I think it's fair to also say, there are a lot of folks out there that see this as a bright spot for the future of our community, and I do appreciate everybody on this council. I don't think people realize all the consternation, deliberation, and work that went in to discussing this issue. And the appropriation document, I know John Stickell's bringing Luisa right now, because it gives us a chance to operate come January 1. Thank you all for the interview for this community. Thank you all for sharing and listening for, you know, positive, as Mr. Swizer said earlier in his invocation. Thank you.
Mr. Titterington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just keeping items. First of all, the, as I mentioned last week, North Market intersection at Troy Urbana is open for the season. It will close for a brief period of time in the spring sometime once the asphalt plan opens to finish up some work on Troy Urbana. The final coat of asphalt is not down. We did not want to put that down until the weather is good for it so that that final coat lasts. There are a couple of dips in the road, and we've got some signs out, or we're in the process of putting some signs out just to caution people, but again, it is open. With the holiday season, once the season is over, real trees can be put out at the curb, starting on the 29th of December through the end of January, and we will pick them up and compost them, provided they don't have any decorations on them and they are not wrapped in plastic. Just leave them out by themselves bare. And again, that will be from the end of December through, through the end of January. You do not have to cut them up into limbs or anything like that. And then finally, with the holiday season, trash and refuse, refuse and recycling, excuse me, pickup, since we will be closed 25th and 26th, as well as the first, New Year's, January 1st, that service will be delayed, December 25th, one day, the Thursday to Friday, and then on New Year's, Thursday pickup will be on Friday, and then Friday on Saturday. Those are the only two days in the year now that we are doing that. Every other holiday that we have, we are keeping the same schedule, and it's worked fine. This year, this is the first year we've done it. Few complaints, and you know, if somebody forgets, then you know, we'll come back and pick it up, but these are the two holidays that we do delay one, one day. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, do you have any comments this evening?
None, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Stickell, any comments this evening?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone in council have any comments this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question for Mr. Titterington. As I go through the third row, I still see large piles of leaves. Are we still on track to pick up leaves?
Yes, we are in the third round, if you will, third cycle. We have not finished yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, have a safe holiday, and we'll be pleased to see everybody back after the first meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any staff members have any comments this evening? Anyone in the audience have any comments?
I'm Jack Carter. I live at 995 South Dorset Road here in Troy. I'm also an attorney here in town, and I'm the chairman of the Troy History Book Committee. My little committee and I have been working on a bicentennial Troy, history of the city of Troy since 2010. That book was finally delivered from the publisher on November 17, and now it's available for purchase through the Troy History Book Committee. We've had volunteers on duty at the local history library since November 17. We've kind of cut back our hours a little bit, but I just want to get the word out about the book, and Tom Fundenberg was kind enough to invite me to come and promote the book a little bit, so please come and get the book.
Would you like to turn around?
Yeah, maybe I should do that. Yeah.
That would be great.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, any questions about the book? I mean, it's pretty.
No, I just want to say it's really a neat book, and it's a neat Christmas gift for people, so.
Several of you have already kindly bought books. We're very grateful. Proceeds benefit the Troy Historical Society, so it's a great project.
How much is the book?
I'm sorry?
How much is the book, sir?
One copy with sales tax is $45.48.
Mr. Phillips.
Do you know the hours that your volunteers are there now for?
Well, I have a brochure here. Somebody's going to be on duty there until 8 o'clock tonight. I'm probably going to go back over there tonight. We want to make it convenient for you. So, and then.
Isn't it on sale at All Round?
Yeah, we just put copies of it in Roundabout Books, so Sue Cantrell has it. There's one on display in Brower's. So, and I have some brochures here. If you want to give one of us a call, we'll connect with you and make sure that you can get a book if we're not on duty.
Madam President.
Mr. Clark?
I would just say, Mr. Carter, it's a beautiful, beautiful piece of work, and it's a great, great book for family on Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very kind. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
This is a brochure to contact us. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments this evening?
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. I'm glad to see, even though I missed a couple of meetings, nothing's changed up here. It still goes. It still runs, the Little Engine That Could. What a committee. What a committee. I wish you all Merry Christmas, and I know the citizens of Troy are going to be poorer from now on, because we still got a lot of increases to go. Our license tags, our trash pickup, our water and sewer bills. I don't know what else they can think of, but I'm sure, given time, they'll think of something to come up with, another idea to get to citizens, so have a Merry Christmas, folks. Don't be screwed.
Yeah, Jim Thompson, 209 Notting Hill. I just want to take the time to thank Ms. Oda, Mr. Clark, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Twist. The four of you on these issues with renovations and so forth, I can just say that at least the four of you tried to do the responsible thing with the taxpayers' money. If the other five here, if you run your households the way you blow our money sometimes, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I'm Rosaleen Raymond. I live at 31 North Walnut Street in Troy. I'd like to say to Robin, to Al, to Bobby, and to Mr. Twist, a new councilperson, thank you so much. I was hoping against all hope that someone else would change their view. Next year, I'm sure you'll have your rubber stamps, and you'll have them re-inked. Ms. Oda, I appreciate all that you do for us citizens of Troy in regards to what you put on Facebook. You're very knowledgeable, and you pass it on to we, the citizens, that we know some important things in Troy, like the road was open earlier this week, like tonight, Roundabout Books, you knew that the books could be sold there, and I appreciate the fact that And I appreciate the fact that I spoke to a lot of council people, not all, but I was really hoping that I could change someone's mind, because we're talking about a terrible amount of money, and it's not finished yet.
Good evening. Happy holidays. I want to thank all those who voted no, because last week I had my last $2 million dinner at the Tin Roof. $2 million, sitting there trying to eat a dinner. $2 million and trying to vision what that will look like after I've lived here my entire life. My father was the first golf pro where the stadium sits, and I can't tell you beyond that. In 1913, we started having our family reunion in August, 101 years, in August at the park. So it was a wonderful $2 million to sit there and figure out what the heck is going on. I do want to say those who voted no and stuck to the guns, I'm sorry that the budget had to be $200,000. I understand tonight on Channel 7, it was great to hear that United Way is $30,000 short their goal, so they're going to try to raise money by the end of the year. All this is going on, and it's amazing that you're going to amass a bill within the next five to eight years, it's going to be total of almost $30 million. Because this project isn't not $10 million five, you didn't even add the interest. That's just the principle on all of it. Just the principle. And I don't think the citizens of Troy realizes that every time you pass something, it's the principle, it's not, doesn't have the interest on it. It saddens me so. And it saddens me that we have 26,000 people in this city who don't come down here and voice their opinions. I'm bipartisan. I've been on both sides of the fence, but I just, it's going to rain tonight. When it start raining, I'm thinking, well, is it going to flood tonight? And I want to request, I think if you're going to go as far as the band shelter, and you do all that, I would like to see that being named after the Nestleys. I grew up with them. I voted down there. I did a lot of things. They are the ones that had it going for so many years, and I think that that's who it should be named after.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Char. I operate the Troy Bulk Barn and Deli at 4 West Main Street. I want to bring a whole fresh piece of information to the table tonight. The downtown merchants and offices, and now the expanding number of residents that we have downtown, have experienced, experienced a tremendous growth over the last couple of years. As far back as 15 years ago or so, there was a street level occupancy of around about 85 to 90 percent. We are at 99 percent occupancy in downtown, and that is all-inclusive, including the upper floors, including the residential spaces that exist. Back at least 15 years ago, the city commissioned a report from Woolport and spent money to do a study for parking, because parking was a problem even then. And 15-plus years have gone by, and council and the city has done nothing to address the ever-increasing parking problem that we have in downtown Troy. It's a problem for city employees, it's a problem for county employees, it's a problem for the people that live downtown. There are people that have invested in buildings in the downtown area that want to do redevelopment and include more residential places, but there's no place for the residences to park. And more importantly, as a businessperson in downtown Troy, we hear way too often from our customers that they've circled and circled and circled, and there's no place to park. The city, several, several meetings ago, brought forth a resolution to triple, almost triple, the parking rates. That's not going to solve the problem. Tripling the parking rate is a problem in and of itself. Many of the people that work downtown earn a minimum wage, and to go fro, and many of them are there for 10 hours or more during the course of their workday. So while that might deter the shoppers and the consumers and the folks that have to go to court, you know, that are only going to be here for a few hours at a time, that you can make a little more money off of them, unfortunately, I think what wasn't considered was the amount of money that it costs for people that work here. So my employees who were paying a dollar a day, or $6 a week, because we are a six-day operation, are now paying $250 a day, or $15 a week, and it becomes a $60 a month parking bill, which is exorbitant. And it's way more than what you're going to find in any other, not a city as large as Cleveland, or a city as large as Cincinnati, but certainly cities that are like-sized to Troy, or between a Troy and a Cincinnati, the parking rates are ridiculous. And it's time, now that the city has spent money years ago to investigate parking and have done nothing about it, now's the time to take action. You just voted to spend a lot of money to develop something else to enhance the livelihood of Troy. You've got merchants who have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in bringing livelihood to downtown Troy, and you need to become more business-friendly and support those merchants, as well as support your own staff and the staffs of the folks that work in this area by doing something about the parking problem. Whether it be a parking garage, whether it be something that you work cooperatively with the county, because they have the same parking issues for their employees that you have for yours, that we all have for our own. I've done a lot of research. It's not going to be a cheap investment, but if it's something that you can do cooperatively with other organizations or infrastructures that exist within the city, I think it's doable. But it's not something that we can wait another 15 years for the city to invest in a study and do nothing with. So I'm asking you that one of you champion the research that needs to be done, so that a resolution can come forward, and we can finally address the parking problem before you lose the high that we're all riding on at a 98 percent occupancy downtown. Because if we can't get our customers in the door, we can't stay here, and we don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Meeting adjourned.